Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Reverend Ben Wills of First United Methodist Church, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray together. God of justice and mercy, help all gathered here to act with character and conviction. Remind us that we are all stewards of your authority and love in our community. Holy Spirit, guide these representatives and leaders to be the leaders your people need in the midst of both triumphs and tragedies. Give them a vision of justice and truth that mirrors your own. Give them wisdom and discernment for hard decisions. Lastly, give them an abundance of your grace as they seek to help LaGrange continue to be the greatest little city in America for all of its residents. This we pray in the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Wills. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held June the 8th. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive comments on a request to make Douglas Street and Peachtree Street one-way streets. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did properly advertise this. We also sent out letters to all the residents along Douglas Street, Peachtree Street at this time. We would take any comments.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to be heard on this request?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bobby Trailer, if you would...
I have a tenant that's 604 Douglas. She's already given me notice she was moved. Everyday notice. Because the way it's marked off, handicap where else could be about that far from the... from the... about three. The other side of the street, that church, has not been in operation. You live across the street. How long?
I've been living there ten years or more.
I mean, it is vacant. There's a house on the other corner of Peachtree that's been vacant for years. So, there's nothing on the other side of the street would keep the thread from going there. Nothing on that side. You wouldn't disengage anybody because it's over there. And I would definitely rather have the one-way on that side because the homeowners is on this side.
So, appreciate you being here, Councilman Trailer. And so, what I'm hearing you say is that you're in favor of the one-way street, but you would like to revisit the placement of the thread?
It could be on the right or the left.
Okay.
That's where it comes in because the homeowners need privacy. They will need everything in their go.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you sharing the comment. And we'll definitely refer that to the design team to see if they can...
I know we had a question here, but I just want to ask you guys a question real quick. Your handicap ramp, is that like a wooden ramp?
It is.
Okay, so if we were to come through there and somehow break it, we would have to replace it with a more modern one. Right, right. We'd have to replace it.
Count Nathan Gaskin would have to replace it.
Right, right. Okay. I was just...
A cliff by later.
Okay.
Yeah, the city repairs damage that we cause when we do projects.
And anything messed up in his front yard, we'd have to fix, right?
Yes. No, when the city does work, we restore the landscape to the way it was before.
But let me ask you this, Mr. Mayor. How much right away from Centerland on Douglas does the city own?
Yeah, I don't think the council knows that answer. So, I mean, I think we'll...
If we're one-way and credit push-out occurs, we're not coming any closer.
From the Centerland, you couldn't...
Right. Well, I don't think this is appropriate for the public hearing right now. I mean, I think y'all need to talk about that. The council's not going to decide the placement of the thread. That's something that staff does. So, the staff will work on the placement of the thread. All we're deciding is whether or not to one-way the street. That's the only issue before the council.
One-way is a lot better.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. If you'll come to the microphone and identify yourself for the record.
We didn't ask Bobby because he's a young man.
Yeah. My name Adrian Greer. I live on Peachtree Street. I'm against the one-way. I've been there over thirteen years. And it's just inconvenient. That street is really not that big. And we come in for one-way and sometime we had to go out another way. I mean, it shouldn't be made a street where you could just only enter through this way. And for this stop sign, they already put a stop sign up there. I don't even think a stop sign should even be there because it's behind the beer company and there's no inner street coming in from that way. So, I talked to a lady today and she said people be running the stop sign. And I asked her, is any accident being reported of any, for anybody running a stop sign? And she said, no. And I mean, it's just so inconvenient. And I went around to a lot of neighbors and they are against it too. I mean, we have to live over there. And they're coming in and making a trail through there. And I just don't, I don't really think it's the appropriate place to make a trail. Normally trails be made at a park somewhere, not through your resident where you live.
Yeah.
What's the street address over there?
Where I live, 210 Peachtree Street.
You said that others that's not far because we were told that everybody...
No, that ain't true. I have signatures where, and I know it ain't talking to me. I got the letter in the mail. That's why I'm here. I'm totally against it. And I have names of people when I...
Do they live on that street?
They live on the street or against it. And some people wasn't at home. I got straight off work and knocked on doors today. And the people that was there, they did sign it and said they're against it.
One question I have for you is, we're talking about both Peachtree and Douglas Street. And I think if, but one, I think, Councilman Trailer, your property's on Douglas Street. Is that right?
Mine's on Douglas and...
Mine's on the corner of Douglas and Peachtree, right over there.
So, we've got people from Douglas who seem to be in favor of it. You're the one from Peachtree or opposed?
I'm in favor for it to be a one-way down.
On Peachtree as well? Okay. I just wanted to...
I live on the corner.
That is two separate issues. And it could be theoretically.
It run right into Peachtree Street, though, Douglas Street.
Right.
The intersection.
Yeah, but I think, I think, and I could be wrong, but I think that the, you mentioned that it's not a very wide road. You mentioned it's a narrow road.
I mean, you making it a one-way. I mean, it's been a two-way road forever. I mean, you...
Well, my point is, my point is, my point is, it's mentioned that it's a narrow road. And particularly, I think Douglas was where there was some concern about it becoming even more narrow if the thread was expanded. And that's why the one-way made more, made more traffic flows, as I recall the discussion. But you're, but are you okay with one-way Douglas Street?
I am, no. I'm not...
And you live on Peachtree?
I live on Peachtree. If I leave, sometime I leave home, I may go Douglas Street way. Sometime I may go North Greenwood way.
And those people that signed, they on Peachtree?
Peachtree Street.
Okay.
And they're against it.
Thank you. I just want to take the time to thank you. I know that you work at Hyundai Trans. And thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come tell us about what's going on in your neighborhood. I know we don't say this much, but we really, really appreciate it. Because it's not often that we have public hearings that people show up and your voice will be heard. Thank you.
Okay. I know the elderly lady that lives across the street, she did say somebody came to her house, but they didn't ask her was she okay with it. They told her what they was gonna do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in council chamber? Yes, ma'am?
I would just say something.
Well, if you'll come to the microphone and identify yourself and make your comment.
I live on the corner of 200 Peachtree Street. Douglas Street comes right down to Daddy and to Peachtree. Around that corner there, I live right there, on the corner of Douglas and Peachtree Street. It's 200. If they don't make that a one-way street going down from my way, people that's coming up Peachtree this way is gonna be right there in my front door. Because the thread is gonna be on the other side. And everybody that's gonna be coming up, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a crash. And I see people running the stop sign. They don't pay no attention to the stop sign on Douglas Street or Peachtree. They come up there and they turn around. They think it's a turnaround. And it's not a turnaround. But people come up there because they want to turn around and go back down Peachtree Street to park their vehicles. And it's just annoying. And I hate to have to leave my home because people are coming on this side where my mailbox is, and it's just gonna clash there. I mean, there's no two ways about it. So, I'm the one that's gonna suffer from all of this. Not the people down Peachtree. It's gonna be me. And the man next door, it's gonna be right there too. They gonna come on his side of the street where his mailbox is to come up because they're not gonna drive on the threads. Because it's not, it's not bit wide enough for two cars to get there. Not at all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Let me, yeah, let me see, Councilman Trailer, let me see if anybody else in council chambers would like to speak on this. Yeah?
In a short distance on Douglas and Peachtree, is a thread gonna be used enough to cause all the confusion? Because that is a short room. And that's, the use of that thread in that shorter time, I don't believe is really worth the disruption. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is David Emerson, and I own two houses on Peachtree. Adrian Greer, I own her house, the house that she lives in. And I don't really have a preference one way or the other. I don't object to the one-way. I support the thread. I don't object to the one-way or the thread either way because I don't live there. But I also see advantages both ways. So, I know there are people here a lot smarter than I am. They're gonna figure out what the best thing is and the best solution for this. But as the owner of the two houses on Peachtree, I don't have an objection to either way.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in council chambers who wishes to be heard on this, on this, on this request? Oh, Natalie, sorry. Yeah.
I just want to say again, I did go door-to-door, and there were only three houses that people didn't answer the door. And I talked to all of them. And so, I did...
On Douglas?
On Peachtree and Douglas. Yes. The ones that were at the homes. With Fernando went with me on Friday morning, the 11th. So, we did go. So, it was very much my understanding that they were for it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay. I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to delegations. I'm delighted to welcome LGTV intern Jamal Jones. I'm also informed that Jamal's father, Jerry Cameron, is a employee of the city and a much-beloved employee of the IT department. And he himself is a member of our youth council in addition to being LGTV intern. And I guess I will look to...
Nick Adams, he's been helping direct the youth council's gonna present to us tonight.
Hello, mayor and council. So, yeah, Jamal was a member of our LaGrange Youth Council. He was dual-enrolled at West Georgia Tech and while attending LaGrange High School and Think Academy, graduating early last December. So, he wanted to know more about our government. And he came and talked to Ms. Van Shore. And so, we coordinated a plan for him to meet with different department heads to learn a little bit more about city government. We're excited to see where he goes as this, as a future leader in whichever path he ends up taking. So, I'd like to introduce Jamal Jones.
All right. So, I just want to say, I grew up in LaGrange all my life. I was born in LaGrange. I was raised here. And it was just an amazing opportunity because you don't really understand how much the city of LaGrange really do work for us, living here, making sure everything is all right for the business around LaGrange. And just doing the internship was an amazing thing because I learned like how much our sewer company works for us and make sure we have water and every day and how much y'all work towards the electricity for the small business and make sure they have their own wifi, internet connection. Like just all the small things y'all do, even bringing things to LaGrange. Because I know coming up, we sit around and we say, we don't have nothing new or there's nothing coming around. But like just being around there and seeing and hearing about it every day really brings a lot of hope to you because you think it's never gonna be better. But it really is. And y'all really do work harder than we really do believe. So, I just want to say thank you all and know, keep doing what y'all doing.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Under petitions, we have a board of planning and zoning appeals recommendation on a request to rezone Vernon Street at Hills and Dale's Farm Road from R1 Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial.
Mr. Costel, give this report, mayor.
Good evening, mayor and council members. An applicant by the name of Murg Hoffman has requested that 5.062 acres of land be carved from a parent track located on Vernon Street immediately adjacent to Hills and Dale's Farm Road, and that it be rezoned from R1 Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Under our proposed Unified Development Ordinance, this rezoning would be from S U R or suburban, single-family residential to C R M X, which is corridor mixed use. These 5.062 acres would then be combined with a contiguous 11.447, I'm sorry, 47 acres that front Vernon Street immediately adjacent to Hills and Dale's Farm Road. The Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals met on Monday, June the 14th, 2021, and unanimously voted to recommend this rezoning. The action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, July the 27th, 2021, if it is your pleasure to do so.
Move a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. I have, I have a motion and a second to call for public hearing. Any discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Costel, I forgot to ask this this morning. Does Mr. Hoffman own this property?
He does not. He's working with the Callaway Trust as well as the business that is proposing to develop that property or to relocate to that property.
Do we know if the property will be sold or is that just something we don't know?
That I do not know at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion to call for hearing, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We will move on to reports. Do any council members have anything to report tonight?
No report.
No report but a comment. Mr. Jamal, I want to thank you for using the word hopeful. Coming from your mouth, saying that you feel hopeful here in the city of LaGrange gives me hope. Thank you. Carry on.
Mr. Mayor, I have one. This is sort of just a request for the city manager and the staff. I had a citizen to raise question about the, I guess you'd say, the safety of the intersection where you're coming out of Barnard Road and turning left to go towards the new bridge. They were complaining to me that the site was not clear and that they wondered if there's anything that could be done to improve the safety of that intersection. And I just had forgotten to bring it up to you earlier. So, if we could ask if you get the appropriate person to look into that and see what you think about that.
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
Anything else? Okay. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey?
There are a few tonight, mayor. First, this morning, we had a visit from Ms. Kathy Tilly, the executive director of Visit LaGrange. She presented her spending plan for FY22, showing her revenues and being very conservative in those estimates for hotel motel tax as well as her expenses. And the majority, as pursuant to state law, are spent for marketing and advertising staff. Would recommend that council approve her spending plan for FY22.
Move approve.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the budget, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
We also talked about two upcoming work sessions and council meetings where we have some conflicts. So, we talked about first moving the July 13th meeting, which is a Tuesday, to July 15th, which is that Thursday of that same week, same 11:00 and 5:30 meeting times. And then moving the August 10th meeting to August the 12th, again, the same meeting times. Just need a motion from council to move forward with that.
Second.
Have a motion and second to move the two meetings and work sessions in council meetings as indicated by the city manager. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Ms. Kelsey?
That completes my report, mayor.
Okay. All right. We will move on to resolutions. We have a resolution for the 2021 municipal election adopting the calendar of events.
Yes, sir. So, we do have an election this year that will be held on November the 2nd. We have a calendar of events before you and your attachment that basically sets our schedule for that, with the major event being the qualifying, which will be from August the 16th through August the 20th. We do have four seats open during the cycle. The mayor's seat, Dr. Gore's seat, Mr. Arrington's seat, and Mr. Gaskin's seat. Council just needs to move forward to adopt this calendar.
Motion move forward to adopt the calendar.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt the calendar events. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a resolution designating the Troup County voter registrar as the voter registrar in absentee ballot clerk for 2021 city of LaGrange municipal election.
Yes, sir. This is just a resolution whereby we use Troup County to administer our elections. And we have the last 25 years that I've been here.
Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We'll move on to first reading of ordinances. We have an ordinance, traffic on a portion of Douglas Street and Peachtree Street be one-way.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to modify the code, to provide the traffic on a portion of Douglas Street and Peachtree Street be one-way, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Okay. And we have second reading of ordinances. We have several. The first is an ordinance adopting the 2021-2022 budget.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to provide for the adoption of a budget containing estimates and proposed revenues and expenditures for the city for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, to provide for separability, to fix an effective date, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and for other purposes.
Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have an ordinance levying an ad valorem tax for 2021. As has previously been discussed by the city manager, even though the city levies an ad valorem tax, the purpose of that levy is to roll back the local option sales tax so that the net tax collection for the city of LaGrange for property tax will be zero for, I believe, the 23rd or thereabout year, zero actual collection. So, but in order to set the appropriate levy, we had to have a, we had to have the digest, right?
At the time of your first reading, I didn't have the digest to know what that millage rate was, would be to roll back to zero. So, I did get that information. And that is included in your substitute ordinance, mayor.
So, with that in mind, staff has prepared a substitute ordinance that uses the correct levy so that the rollback is an effective rate of zero.
That is correct.
Okay. The first thing I need to see, is there a motion to authorize the introduction of a substitute ordinance?
Some of.
Second.
Have a motion and second to authorize the substitute ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. So, now, we will have the ordinance adopting the substitute ordinance levying the ad valorem tax for 2021.
A substitute ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to levy an ad valorem tax for the city for calendar year 2021, to provide for separability, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Move approve.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
No taxes.
No taxes. That's the hashtag, right? Hashtag no taxes. We have second reading of an ordinance adopting the LaGrange Unified Development Ordinance, including a new zoning map, the readoption of our current garden district text and map, and rezoning all parcels of land within the city.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the code so as to delete therefrom Title 25, inserting in lieu thereof a new Title 25 to be known as the LaGrange Unified Development Ordinance, to modify the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city, to modify and or recodify former code provisions regarding community development, signs, building and building regulations, buffers, landscape and trees, subdivisions, flood damage prevention, stormwater management, soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control, and on-site sewage management system maintenance, with then a new Unified Development Ordinance to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, to provide for separability, and for other purposes.
Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have a second reading modifying the city code to conform to the LaGrange Unified Development Ordinance.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to modify references within the code of the city of LaGrange to conform to the Unified Development Ordinance to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have an ordinance modifying the gas service rates.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend section 20-10-3 of the code in order to modify schedules 40, 41, 42, and 48 of the gas service rate schedule, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And lastly, we have an ordinance modifying the residential and commercial garbage collection fees.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend Articles 2 and 3 of Chapter 15-10 of the code in order to modify the fees for certain residential garbage and commercial garbage collection, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Under board and agency appointments, we have for the LaGrange Gas Authority, three-year terms to succeed Meg Kelsey and Patrick Bowie.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Have a motion and second to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Under Visit LaGrange, we have two-year terms to succeed Rob Goldstein, Tabitha Coverson, Carlton Wood, and Chris Lutz.
Will we reappoint with the replacement of Mr. Goldstein by Mr. Chase Hudson?
Okay. So, I have, I have a motion and a second to appoint two-year terms. That would be Chase Hudson, Tabitha Coverson, Carlton Wood, and Chris Lutz. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we have for Visit LaGrange, to fill the unexpired term of Bobby Carmichael.
We have talked about a replacement, and I'm honestly blanking on the name at the moment.
Yeah, that was a name.
Yeah, we had Nikki Franklin.
Who to appoint Nikki Franklin?
Second.
Have a motion and second to appoint Nikki Franklin. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. And that passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, before the closing comments, I want to first thank Meg for continuing to do something that Bobby, when he was on council, along with Nick Woodson. I think my good friend, I can't remember if he's passed away now, was on council with us. But we worked with Tom Hall and established no taxes for LaGrange. And Meg has continued to do that along with the budget. Bobby, we worked a long time on that thing, didn't we?
Worked a long time.
No taxes for the citizens of LaGrange. And so...
People of LaGrange, I would have to appreciate that.
That's over 20-some years ago that we've had no taxes for LaGrange. So, I just want to thank Meg along with Bobby while he's here and the council. Because we worked real hard to continue to keep that for LaGrange. And I think the citizens need to know, a lot of cities our size that have city...
And I think the citizens need to know, a lot of cities our size that have city tax, but as city and county tax, but we don't have city tax. And that's because of a lot of work that's been put into that.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Okay, Ms. Van Shor, if you'd like to close us.
Yes, sir. We are very proud of our former youth council member Jamal Jones. And we have two other interns this summer who were also LaGrange Youth Council members. So, we're very proud of what we've been doing with the LaGrange Youth Council. And we've been, we've been, we've been getting some very engaged young leaders and they're involved in our city government. And we did want to let our mayor and council and everyone else know that we are now accepting applications for the youth council. So, if y'all'd like an application to share with a junior or senior, they do have to be a City of LaGrange resident. But of course, we always offer opportunities for young leaders if they'd like to learn more about the government. So, send them my way or Adam's way.